Hereby called to order then the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, March 13th, 2023. The roll call will stand as previously called for the EDA meeting. We'll note just a little bit of a change in personnel here at the DAAS. We have Rachel Tierney here. Our city attorney has taken the place of Miss Fierney, our EDA attorney. Otherwise, the cast of characters remains the same and we'll certainly be introducing anyone who's participating in the meeting as the agenda items come up. We already did the Pledge of Allegiance as part of the EDA meeting. We won't repeat that. So next on tonight's agenda would be approval of the agenda, and as we always do, we'll start with staff on any potential changes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I did communicate to the council members earlier today about possible addition to tonight's agenda. That is to consider sending a letter of support on behalf of Every Meal for funding from the state for a new food distribution facility. A copy of that proposed letter is on the DAAS, and we'd ask that be added to the agenda as 7D.
All right. We'll take that under consideration. Any other changes requested from council members? I don't even know what the way of consent. We don't have a consent agenda to remove items from this evening. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item 7D, the support letter for Every Meal?
So moved. Second?
It's been moved by Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Strawn. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. That passes unanimously. Our agenda is approved as amended. That brings us then to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to items that are not on this evening's agenda, but may be of interest to the members of the public related to things going on in the city or comments on city business. We don't appear to have anybody from the public with us at this point who might participate in that, so I'll forego further description of it. And nobody still online, Mr. Trech.
Correct.
All right. With that, then, seeing nobody here for public comment, we'll go on with our agenda. That brings us right into our business items this evening, and our first business item, 7A, is to receive the 2022 year-end cash reserve fund report and consider some fund transfers in accordance with the policy. We have our finance director, Michelle Petrick, with us this evening to bring this item before us. Ms. Petrick, welcome.
Good evening. The city has an operating fund reserve policy that was updated in 2020, and the policy states that we review five funds every year, and if there are excess reserves above the maximum reserve level for that specific fund, that we would transfer it to the excess cash reserve fund. For 2022, there is currently one fund that exceeds its high reserve level, which is the Parks and Recreation Fund. The high target reserve is 30%, and that fund exceeded it by $20,317. Other funds that we examine, the License Center ended the year at 11%, which is above its minimum reserve level. The General Fund is ending the year with a 36% cash reserve level, which is above the minimum 35%. The Communications Fund is ending the year with a 5% cash reserve level, which is below its minimum of 10%. So in keeping with past practice, we would be looking to transfer funds out of the excess cash reserve fund over to Communications in the amount of $31,436. The Information Technology Fund ended the year with a 0.39% cash reserve level, which is almost zero. And this is largely the result of the fair value market adjustment for our investments, and I'll get into that in a little bit. This fund has changed its function. We no longer have a information technology department. We now have a contractual service. And during the '24 budget process, we will be collapsing this fund into the General Fund, which means the contractual service will move into administration, and the antenna lease revenue, which currently resides in this fund, will move into the General Fund as well. Staff are not recommending any transfers to make this fund equal its minimum reserves because it will become part of the General Fund. With that, I had an attachment that showed the year-end cash reserves for the various funds that we just discussed. I also have an analysis of the cash reserve fund. And what you'll see for '22 activity is a negative interest revenue of $59,634. This is a function of the requirement by GASB that we have to, at year end, adjust our investments to fair market value. At year end, the market had jumped significantly. Our investments that we currently have are below where the market was as of December. There's been a lot of market volatility since December, and what we are forced to do is record a large loss, and that didn't impact the General Fund as well, but it's an unrealized loss. We hold our investments to maturity, so it's an accounting entry that we must make to our books, but it is not a realized loss unless we had to sell an investment. Our portfolio has laddered in such a way that we should never, ever have to sell an investment. We currently have approximately 50% of our investments in securities of one to five years. 43% of our portfolio is six to 10 years invested, and 7% is over 10 years. And this is our investment portfolio, which at year end was $42 million. We also keep cash liquid but invested in a money market account, so we are making interest on every dollar and penny that we have. And we try to keep the liquidity in the zero-to-one-year range so that it times out to our next tax payment. So with that, we're looking to transfer a net in and out of the cash reserve fund of $11,119. Out. Are there any questions?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Petrick. Questions, Councilmember Schroeder.
Thank you very much for presenting this, and actually, you had addressed a number of my questions already with your good presentation. Just wanted to, again, make the point that the negative 59 is a noncash, so therefore it doesn't affect the cash balance in this account. And also, those investments are quite conservative, so it's not that we're at risk with those as well.
No. We invest according to statute and our investment policy. If you'll remember, back in 2020, most of our investments got called, so we were entering the market at a relatively low-interest environment. We've, I mean, we were happy to get 1.5% at one point in time. And as our investments mature, and we've shortened up the portfolio, so we have opportunity to have investments mature, so we're able to either hold the cash, or if right now, I can get better investment rates than we're investing. And right now, the better rates are in the two-to-four-year range. Anything longer than that, the curve is actually kind of downward trending.
Well, and it's good to see that we're sitting in a good cash position overall. So that's the other thing that I came away from this, is that we have this problem of having too much cash in some areas. It's a good problem to have at one hand, to be able to cover the loss at another. So it makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Just a clarification, a couple of clarifications. So the acronym GASB is?
Oh, Government Accounting Standards Board.
Perfect. And then on the IT fund, I'm presuming that that is the operating side of it?
Correct.
So that we're still maintaining funds to account for the capital needs
Yes.
that we will still have through the consortium for our IT purposes at the city.
Yeah. The City of Roseville Capital IT Fund, we have a separate fund right now. It will get rolled up with the other vehicle and equipment funds that we have, and it'll fall in that category.
All right. And that's all part of the 2024 budgeting process.
Yep.
So I just wanted to double-check that.
Yep.
Good question. All right.
Operations will...
Right, exactly. Other questions? And I'll check. It doesn't appear that there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this topic, which is really surprising as controversial as it is.
[laughing]
So we have the request before us to make the, authorize the transfer from the Parks and Rec Fund into the cash reserve fund as outlined, and then also the transfer from the cash reserve fund into the Communications Fund as outlined. Is there a motion from the council?
I'll move. Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Groff to do those two things as outlined. Discussion on the motion, Councilmember Schroeder. Any additional discussion beyond what we've had? All right. Councilmember Groff?
This was an easier one than last year.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Then we've got the motion before us once again to authorize those transfers into and out of the cash reserve fund as outlined. With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. That passes unanimously. Those funds are authorized to be transferred. Thank you again. All right. That brings us to item 7B, which is to consider reappointments to city commissions. We've got a few reappointments that are, have been applied for, for people who are currently serving a term or wrapping up a term on the commission and are eligible and have applied for reappointment. We have two such individuals for the Finance Commission, two such individuals for the Human Rights Inclusion and Engagement Commission, one such individual for the Planning Commission, one for the Police Civil Service, and one for the Public Works Environment and Transportation. I will, with that summary, unless staff has anything else to add, we'll open it up to the council for potential action. Councilmember Ratten?
I'd like to move a slate of these returning folks. I'd like to move Siapa Barclay and Bruce Bestor to the Finance Commission, Richard James to the HREC, Tammy McGee to the Planning Commission, Shawna Dees to the Police Civil Service Commission, and Jared Secha. We have this debate every time.
Secha.
Secha, I apologize to you. Jared, sir, to the Public Works Environment and Transportation Commission.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Ratten, seconded by Councilmember Strawn to make those reappointments as outlined. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Ratten is the maker of the motion.
I feel like these folks are, on the whole, doing a great job. Appreciate that they came in for interviews last week and appreciate their continued service.
All right. Additional discussion as the second or Councilmember Strawn?
I echo those thanks. It was very nice to get to meet some of the people that we had not met in the past and to see how they fit together, especially the folks who brought physical evidence of the progress they've made. It was impressive, and it was very enlightening to see how the process worked. So I appreciate their ongoing commitment to this.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion for reappointment? Councilmember Groff?
I would want to echo those comments. I just think it was really, even though I know it added to our time and we had to do two evenings of interviews, I thought it was really helpful for me to hear from the people who had been on the commissions and to compare their background and their information compared to the people that are just applying because it kind of showed in real time what the progress is and what their understanding is of the process. So it was good, and I think that Mr. Bestor outdid everyone with his sheet of information.
As he always does.
Additional discussion on the motion. Councilmember Schroeder?
I just wanted to make a point that I appreciate all the service that, the people that we're going to reappoint, and I really think being reappointed makes sense because they have done so much good work for us, and it would be great to be able to continue working with them because they do know how it works. And to have some senior people on the commissions to have worked with the newer people coming on board, I think is a good way to do it.
All right. Councilmember Strawn?
I just want to echo Councilmember Groff. It was very nice to get to hear what they had done and hear the difference between the new people who weren't quite sure how they fit and what actually the commission actually did versus someone who really was taking that and moving that forward. And so while it hasn't been common practice, I thought it was a very nice way to have, for them to have their 10 minutes with us. No, there's no other opportunity where they're going to get 10 minutes beyond that initial time when they would be appointed for, to tell us, well, or half an hour in some cases. But for them to tell us exactly their specific relationship to the commission. So, yeah, I'm not sure it would always work that way, but I really appreciated, other than the exhaustion of last week, I really appreciated the chance to have that time.
All right. If there's no other discussion on the motion, we've got the motion before us to make the appointments as outlined, which is two to the Finance Commission, one to the Human Rights Inclusion Engagement, one to Planning, one to Police Civil Service, and one to Public Works Environment and Transportation as specified. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That passes unanimously, and I do believe as a result of that action, we have an additional vacancy on the Human Rights Inclusion and Engagement Commission to fill through our application process that is ongoing. We did have to reopen the applications for Human Rights Inclusion Engagement and Finance Commission because per our policy, we did not have the number of applicants that we require for the number of vacancies. This does put a little pressure on us now. We have an additional vacancy to make sure we have enough applicants for, and so, but that, those applications for our Finance Commission and our Human Rights Inclusion and Engagement Commission are open through the 31st of this month. And so we encourage anybody at home who may be interested or knows somebody who might be interested in either of those commissions to do outreach to those folks and get them to get their applications in so we can have a nice, good, healthy pool of applicants as we often do for our commissions. It was somewhat surprising that we didn't have as many for those, but we adapt and we work through it. So we have those opportunities available and encourage folks to apply, once again, for the Finance Commission and Human Rights Inclusion and Engagement Commission with that deadline of March 31st.
Mayor?
Councilmember Groff?
Is there a way that we can contact the people who did not get appointed or may not get appointed tonight and then let them know that those spots are open in case they would want to move their application over?
Certainly, yeah. We'll try to communicate out that there's other openings if they hadn't seen it before. Encourage to apply. Okay. Councilmember Schroeder?
I was looking at the policy that we have, and it says "may establish." So if we don't end up having enough...
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, it's often much field over there.
Yeah, the mic is more directional.
There we go. So according to the policy, it's, if fewer applications are received than twice the number of openings, we may establish. So the point being is, if we don't get twice as many, we could still go ahead and appoint because you don't have to have twice as many.
I think the council has that discretion for the policy.
Yep. Just wanted to make that point.
No, I appreciate that. All right. I believe that closes out the reappointment portion of our program this evening and gets us to new appointments to various commissions. Once again, we had a number of other than those two commissions. We had a number of applicants who are very well-qualified and give us a very difficult decision to make appointments. We have two vacancies on the Park and Recreation Commission. We have one vacancy on the Planning Commission, and we have one vacancy on the Public Works Environment and Transportation Commission this evening to consider. And once again, I will turn it over to the council for potential action in one of those or more of those areas. Councilmember Strawn?
Mayor, I'd like to move to appoint Karen Beckman and Jessica Rager to the Parks and Rec Commission.
I'll second it.
All right. There's a motion, and I'm just catching up with the names here, to appoint Beckman and Rager to the Parks and Rec Commission. And I apologize for mispronouncing names there. Discussion on the motion. So it was made by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Groff. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Strawn is the maker of the motion.
No, we had a really exciting group of candidates for this position. I think they would both bring unique and exciting things to this group.
All right. And as the second or Councilmember Groff?
Well, one of the things I liked about the, I mean, obviously, we had some very good people applying, so it isn't that this was an extremely easy thing, but I do like to see a bit more diversity on our commissions, and we are talking, we've talked about having other voices present. So that's one of my reasons for doing.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. I would tend to concur with the previous comments. Those happen to be my two preferred choices, too, so I'm perfectly comfortable with the motion, just on that basis. But no, once again, great applicants across the board
Yes.
and a difficult decision. And I think it's fair to say that even though we have these tally sheets, it doesn't necessarily mean that we always follow them, but I think it's a good indication of consensus on the council, so it's helpful to the process as well. So we have the motion once again to appoint Ms. Beckman and Ms. Rager to the Parks and Rec Commission. If there's no further discussion, I did provide an opportunity for everybody, right?
You did.
All right. Just want to make sure. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Those appointments are made. Councilmember, oh my gosh, there's two hands up over there. Councilmember Ratten?
Mayor, I'd like to move Matt Bauer for the Planning Commission.
I'd second it.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Ratten, seconded by Councilmember Schroeder to appoint Mr. Bauer to the Planning Commission. Discussion on the motion as the maker. Councilmember Ratten?
I think he presented a good case for himself, some of the involvement in Woodbury and working on planning decisions and working on things with the city. There gives him some unique perspective. I actually appreciate his international experience, kind of might bring some new perspectives to this, to our city.
And as the second or Councilmember Schroeder?
Yeah, you know, that he not only worked with the prairie land and developed it and then got the city involved, and then, so he understood the process from beginning to the end, and I like that. So to be able to see through a process, I thought was really a good skill to have.
Additional discussion on the motion? I think this is a commission that puts us in a little unique position in terms of looking at diversity in the sense that it, I think, is currently six women and one gentleman.
That's true.
And so this might actually be a step towards better diversity on that particular commission.
Except you have 100 years to make up for.
I know. So, yeah, exactly.
Couple.
Exactly. So with that, once again, we've got the motion before us to appoint Mr. Bauer to the Planning Commission. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. That appointment is made. And then finally, for the Public Works Environment and Transportation Commission?
You got it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, goodness. All right. I would move Dez Mueller for the Public Works Environment and Transportation Commission.
And I'll second it.
All right. It's moved by Councilmember Ratten, seconded by the, by Councilmember Schroeder to appoint Ms. Mueller to the PWET Commission. And of course, as I start writing her name, I end it with ET because I was talking at the same time. But anyway, we've got the motion before us. As the maker of the motion, discussion on the motion, Councilmember Ratten?
Certainly. Dez does bring a balance to this commission and the reverse of the way the last commission worked. But I very much appreciate Dez's long-term commitment to the city, working not only as a direct volunteer and picking up trash to other environmental things, but also in working with our city staff and public work staff on many things. She has the knowledge of the department that I think will help her land on the ground and start helping out right away.
All right. And additional discussion from the secondary of the motion?
I would echo that. And she also, you know, when she talked about the sidewalks and walking paths and every, she seems to have a very good understanding of the city and what's going on in the city. So I think she'll have a good perspective.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? And the one thing that I think we are always challenged with on this particular commission is that there are a lot of individuals in our community who have very good technical expertise in these areas.
Right.
And it is, it's very tempting to get all of them on the commission, but I do appreciate having sort of that non-technical perspective and a broad perspective, as was mentioned as well. And so that's why I'm certainly supportive of this appointment. And that's not at all to say that we don't want the people with the technical expertise to apply because, but I think we're just looking for that balance on the commission. So with that, we've got the motion before us to make the appointment of Mueller to the Public Works Environment and Transportation Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That appointment is made. Before we end our commission appointment process discussion, is there anything else we want to talk about? I think we do generally do sort of an after-event recap and see if we want to change or improve anything in the process. That's usually somewhat after we go through this, but if there was anything that we wanted to just reflect on this evening that was on our minds, that's certainly something we can record through the process of having discussion at this meeting and then bring that forward. Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes. You know, the process of moving the meetings around didn't seem to work very well. We, you know, there's a few things that fell through the cracks, and it was loud, and not so sure that, even I was a little confused where it was supposed to be certain nights because we were moving it around. I guess for me, I'd like to see it moved back here, where then all the equipment, and then we have all the agendas here, and things are laid out. We know where things go from that aspect. It doesn't mean we have to sit up here and do it, but we could, you know, we could still use other rooms here or at the table. But I'd like to see it all in one location so it's less confusing that way. And also, I know we, there was some discussion before I came on, should we record it or not? And I think we should record it. Well, one, it's, you know, a meeting, and we record our other meetings. And two, the people applying, they're going to be on TV or recorded every time they're in a meeting. So, I mean, it's not like we are protecting them from not being on televised. So I guess I'd like to see that as well. Just some of my thoughts.
All right. Councilmember, and to be clear, we're not going to make a decision on any of this this evening.
No, no, no.
Getting it out there.
I'm just giving you some thoughts.
While I understand that point about the meeting, some of these folks haven't been appointed yet, so they aren't necessarily someone who would be, have to be held to the public record. But my comment was actually different. I really appreciate, again, the list of questions. I think it's helpful. It does tell us quite quickly who has prepared and who has not. I'd have to say, in general, this crowd was maybe a little less prepared than the last couple we've seen, so I'm not sure if there's anything that can be done to make that easier for people to get there.
The answers haven't handed to them.
I know. I did miss the question about the diversity. There had been a question before about how does diversity apply, you know, how do you see that fitting in with the PWA Commission or whatever? So I did miss that question. I do like having the set questions as the HR Director and me, having that equity piece. So having, thinking, we're all thinking the same thing. And I think, I think it's happened each time that a couple of the questions are very similar or they need a little bit clarification. So I don't know if there's any way that we can look at those in advance before they go out. But I think it's only fair to people to not be in a gotcha moment where they have to, not everyone's a think-on-their-feet kind of person, and they should have an opportunity. I think we're better off when we hear the people who've researched and actually done the homework because it feels more authentic than just trying to ask somebody about something they maybe have no idea, or, well, it's in the title. Well, it's not actually in the title. It's a lot more than just the title. So I appreciate when they have that information, and I appreciate when they take it to heart. I think that proves to us who's going to be maybe a more prepared member of a commission to.
Other thoughts or comments? Councilmember Groff?
Well, I do think that consistency is important on the questioning to a degree because that way you get the same information from each person, and it makes kind of comparing the responses easier for me as a council member. I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other on moving it around. I do, I do want to have the sound consistent. I think that's important. If we were going to do it here, I would definitely want it down there. Having us up here questioning is just a bad optic.
I agree.
So, and maybe we can keep track of the time a little better next time. I don't know. It just seemed to get...
That was on me.
I'm not complaining, but it did get to be a little late that last night.
Could we have a time clock that just said, hey, we have, you know, 10 minutes or whatever, just for them to see it, too? They maybe get started on a story and don't realize.
Yeah. Well, and I think, yeah, we can look at some of those things. Obviously, Yeah, well, and I think, you know, we can look at some of those things, obviously, the time clock can have a, have an effect of scaring the bejesus out of somebody too, so...
Only if you've got a really loud alarm, that's the only way I'd support that.
Well, and having said that, the information was good, so, I mean, I wouldn't want to cut somebody off to, you know...
Right, no, I think, I think certainly, I take it to heart that I think because, because we moved to more two nights and things like that, I had just gotten a little more lax in my enforcement of the time too. So, and we actually, in past years, had reduced the number of questions on each round to help with the time issue, so we may have to look at that too. Just before I recognize Councilmember Atton, I think it would make sense to bring the list of questions back for our, for our follow-up discussion, just so we've all got that and can kind of think about it going into that, and then we can work from that document as we might suggest changes or additions. So, just wanted to make sure I caught that note for staff before we went further. Councilmember Atton?
Thank you. I would say that's true for the questions that are in the online form also, some of those questions changed from before.
So, like the application?
The application, as well as the things we'd ask in there. I do note that in the application, they do ask how they could contribute to the city's equity and inclusion initiatives as a commissioner, so I think that question's there, and I do appreciate that being there. I would also like to move things back here, I think there's just a lot of hassle that didn't work very well this time, and there's some question about being on camera or not, but these cameras are kind of tucked away, that camera is like, here, we're setting up a tripod and aiming something at you when we're offsite, so if anything, I think that could be more intimidating, and it is at public meetings. So, I think that they are putting themselves forward to be on a public commission, and I would, I would move it back here and put it on camera. And I would also like to cap the mayor, and maybe have four questions and five if they're applying to two commissions as a maximum. We ended up at six or seven many times, and that, everyone got a bite at the apple, we had people applying for two commissions, we had two chair, you know, pretty soon it became a really long affair, and so we can kind of look at a structure that limits that.
And I would just note too, and this was feedback I had provided to staff earlier, I think before we even went into the interviews, I really would appreciate if we look at a separate application for reappointment that kind of gets at, you know, maybe not all the questions that we were asking, because I don't want to take away the fact that we asked those questions during the interview, but maybe gets at some of that, that information about their experience on the commission, you know, and how that relates to them applying for reappointment, as opposed to just sort of getting their original application from, you know, in some cases, three years ago, when they were just trying to figure out what the commission was. It just is less relevant for the reappointment process. So, you know, I think we want to look at the questions for appointment and reappointment, you know, I guess it depends on where we go with that discussion about whether we're going to change the policy about always bringing people back for interviews, for reappointments too, whether that enters into it, but I think we want to talk about both of those in the follow-up discussion and make sure we do that, so.
And if we choose not to bring everybody back for reappointment, I think at least a really important reappointment questionnaire that answers some, a lot of those questions would be really helpful. I do know a council or a commissioner who's going, who's timing out on their whole appointment and asked if they could send to us a list of kind of like Mr. Best's list of highlights, and I said yes, I think that was really helpful, I thought that Mr. Best, you're bringing that to us was actually, you know, we kind of gave him an A, and for that effort...
And a gold star.
And a gold star, and an A plus. And just because it was really beneficial for us to see across terms and everything like that, we, we aren't all there throughout the whole process, plus we don't see what's at every other meeting in this organization, thank goodness.
Well, and I think to that point, there had been talk in previous years about trying to figure out a sort of an exit interview process, or maybe an exit questionnaire is a more appropriate way to do that, or something that's more user-friendly for the individual, but I think that's a good, good point, that we want to always be having that, that feedback loop in the process, and we can make sure we're...
I think that's really important, because they could also tell us how we could improve, you know, there are thoughts on how the commission could be improved.
Absolutely.
And when you're leaving a commission, you've got all that knowledge that we're just letting kind of go away, and it would be fun, it would be good for us to have it, I guess, not fun, but helpful.
Some of us might be fun, but...
Maybe fun.
All right, anything else before we continue on with our meeting? All right, thank you again, everyone, for the process and engagement, and I think we got some, some great appointments here, and look forward to the Phase Two or Part Two, where we deal with those other two commissions and all the great people that'll be coming forward for those.
And please encourage everyone who didn't make it to try again.
Yep.
We'll follow up with them directly.
Yep.
Yeah, and even if they're not interested in one of the other commissions, we had some great candidates in one of the spaces for us, so.
Yep. All right, then, that brings us to Future Agenda Review Communications Reports Network. Oh, that's right, D, I have it right here, and it just got hidden, so, thank you. We have the request to consider approving or providing a letter of support to the legislature for Every Meal, which is a charitable organization in the city of Roseville, for their request to the legislature for additional funding for their activities, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Trudgeon to maybe give us a little bit of a, more of a synopsis of that.
Well, I think you did a fine job, Mr. Mayor, but we were contacted by the president of Every Meal. There is a bill, Senate File 2223, and House File 2546, that would provide Every Meal direct appropriation to help build a facility for a few new food distribution site. My understanding, it is about an $8 million cost, and they're looking for the state to fund half of it. I did check on the status of the bill this morning, it looks like they've both been introduced, but no hearing at this point, so they are asking for a letter of support from the city. In talking to the mayor, we felt it was important to bring forward, just to make sure this is something we want to consider, and if so, to approve sending the letter. I already noted the typo, it was too sincerely's on there, so we'll get that corrected, certainly.
Very sincerely.
Yes.
But if there's any other thoughts on the wording of the letter, this mostly comes from what they provided us here, so kind of summarizes what they're asking, and if it's approved, then I'll send it back to Every Meal, and they can distribute it to the legislature since they see fit.
And I would just add that it seemed to me consistent with the past couple of meetings where we've had similar requests from other charitable organizations that we have relationships with, that rather than sort of just assuming support, that we should follow the same process and be consistent there, so that's the reason to read before the council, so certainly open it up for questions or feedback from the council in terms of this, or potentially a motion to authorize sending the letter. Councilmember Atton?
Move approval to send the letter.
Second.
All right, that's been moved by Councilmember Atton, seconded by Councilmember Groff to approve sending the letter of support for Every Meal as outlined, with the change to sincerely, sincerely. Discussion on the motion as maker of the motion, Councilmember Atton?
Please leave the extra sincerely in, and Every Meal does a fantastic job feeding kids across the Twin Cities, as well as here in the Roseville area schools, and appreciate that they would be able to increase their ability to help kids.
And as the secondary, Councilmember Groff?
Kids do better when they have food in their stomach and they can learn, so I'm all for it.
Any other discussion on the motion? The other thing I would note is, I believe Every Meal is our partner on the food distribution that we've done at the fire station and elsewhere in the city for not just children, so it's very important to note that as well, and we very much appreciate that. So, with that, we've got the motion before us, all those, to once again authorize the letter, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that is approved, and thank you, everyone, for catching me on that, otherwise I would have zoomed right past it. Now, Future Agenda Review, Mr. Trudgeon?
Our March, March meetings continues next Monday again, so we have one more to go on the 20th.
We skipped eight. Oh, can I go, I got eight?
No.
Why not?
We don't have any of those items. This agenda item that we're in right now is the one for Future Agenda.
Okay, sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, eight is only for one that's coming back to us.
Fair enough.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
All right, continuing, Mr. Trudgeon?
So, as I mentioned, so the 20th is our next meeting, Monday, our last meeting in March, we've had a series of meetings here, so we'll get through this last meeting in March, receive a fire department presentation and update current advanced life support, consider bringing back the zoning code update Phase Two that you talked about, it was the last meeting, I believe, based on the input, consider awarding ARPA fund grants, that's the COVID dollars that we were talking about earlier, for nonprofits, and then also I'll look to enter into agreement for a kitchen grill vendor for Cedar Home Community Building on the 20th. On the April 10th, look to have an update on Envision Roseville, bring for the massage therapy code amendments, and then the possibility Brahma versus final plot. I know I keep mentioning this, they still haven't submitted everything they need for final approval, they have applied with us, but, so we'll see if that date sticks or moves. And then on the 17th, we're going to have kind of more of a work session, and I have the consultant for the classification and compensation study discussion to come and talk, but an overview of the project, but also the council's philosophy towards compensation, and talk about a couple other issues such as comparable cities, just to make sure we're all on the same page, we want to make sure we get your input into this. We do not want to do a study that you take issue with when it comes out, if there's not any input in the beginning, so we want to make sure that we're on the same page. So, we'll facilitate a discussion, that's really the only topic we have for the 17th at this point.
Any questions for staff on the proposed future agendas here? Councilmember Groff?
And I could wait too, but when did we last do a compensation study?
It was 2012 to 2013?
10 years.
10 years.
Right, if there's no other questions on the future agenda, then are there any council member communications reports, announcements, or future agenda items from council members? Perhaps Councilmember Atton?
The first thing, if we could have on that March 20th, as we talk about awarding the, potentially awarding grants to nonprofits, if we could have an update on the whole package where we're at with committed expenses, planned expenses, money that's not allocated, and I think that would be very helpful. Things have kind of been piecemealing in here in the last few months, and I think it'd be good to get a big picture again on that. Significant amount of money. The piece that I would like to bring up for future agenda would be, I would like the city council to consider opening the door for our commissions to reconsider how their commissions, or an adjusted commission, or even ad hoc committees could work better to serve the needs they see for the city and the city council, by examining their scope and duties, the number and frequency of their meetings, or any other aspects of the current system they might consider asking to change.
All right, can you put that on for an agenda item eight at the next meeting?
Eight sometime, yeah.
Do you have a time certain on that? Because we can tee it up, but if there's any work you want us to do beforehand?
I don't, I don't need it March 20th, for example.
Okay.
Right, so if we say, hey, there's plenty there...
Okay. So, per our policy, we would be putting this on the March 20th meeting for the agenda item eight.
Right.
For the council gadgets.
And then decide if, yeah, yeah, March 20th.
Okay. All right, anything else from council members, Councilmember Strawn?
Yes, I have an upcoming meeting with Commissioner Ray Jock McGuire, if there's something in particular I'd like to make sure that I address with her, if you would let me know what that is. As a liaison, I was invited to meet her. The Metro Cities Annual Board Meeting will be at the Oval in April, and I believe that is, is that a open meeting, or is it just...
It's a membership meeting.
Membership meeting.
For, for the cities, so any council member's certainly welcome.
So, that will be held at the Oval, I think, on the third Wednesday of, of April, and then I was wondering if we needed to send a letter of some kind in regard to that bill that you mentioned about preemption?
Oh, yeah, the land use preemption related to certain requirements for density and things like that. Depending on the prospects of that bill, I think we may not need to, it sounded kind of from staff that it may not be moving that far.
Yeah, if I could, that bill covers a lot of ground, really preempts a lot of local decision-making, and there's certainly some agendas probably being played out from certain interest groups. My understanding is that there is not a, currently a Senate bill, I'm not sure of the likelihood of that happening. I know the League of Minnesota Cities, as well as Metro Cities, have both been actively engaged and involved in that discussion, in fact, I think we heard a discussion last week at the update from League of Minnesota Cities, that they're really on top of that. So, while we can certainly add our voice to the choir, I think there is, it is being covered pretty extensively by the advocacy's of the cities, so it's up to you if you, if you want to enter into that frame. I think there is probably, as I understand, I haven't gone through the whole bill, there's some, some things that are very not beneficial, but there might be some ability for some reform, so I don't, I can't speak to it tonight about every single section of that, but I know there's some pretty drastic changes in local control that we would certainly be concerned about, so we can continue to monitor it, and if we feel there's a need to bring something forward, we can certainly do that, and trust our League of Minnesota Cities and Metro City folks to be on top of it.
Yep, I just thought I'd bring it forward.
Nope, Councilmember Groff?
It isn't any update for me, but does Councilmember Atton want to remind us to get our, our inquiries filled out on the management, manager review?
City manager review process?
Yes, I do. I wasn't worried too much, you've only had two days, but yes, please fill out your view of our city manager.
Because then we'll need to get that on the agenda at some point down the road.
Yeah, yeah, so we have those due, and the city department heads are also part of that, and Pat, and then we will meet with him to kind of frame up our next steps, but waiting for April to bring it to the council.
All right, just by way of a liaison update and related to our legislative agenda, I will be testifying at the Senate Taxes Committee tomorrow morning for, in favor of our state, excuse me, our local option sales tax request, so that will be happening tomorrow.